Now, call this meeting to order. Attendance roll call, please.
Nordike.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Dee Peterson.
Here.
Jay Peterson.
Here.
Vas Ward.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, okay. Following our agenda that we have minutes from the last meeting, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes as published?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Rachel, to approve the minutes as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Minutes are approved. Okay, at this time, we will take comments from visitors. Before we do that, I have a couple of things just to make sure everyone is aware of. The first is that I will be beginning with a brief, brief overview of a revised plan. The school district return to school committee has been at work. As you know, we published the plan in its draft form last week. The school board met on Tuesday morning. That plan was then circulated both to the full board and to this return to school committee, which is comprised of teachers, administrators, and part of the board. That meet, that group met this morning at nine o'clock, and there has been continuous updates. So I want to make sure you have a quick overview, and then I will open it up for comments from the public. When we get to those comments from the public, I will remind you to please, although you have signed in, state your name for the public at home who may be watching on the livestream. We'll ask that you come up and speak into the microphones, and I'll ask you to limit your comments to five minutes. That is not to limit your voice, but it's to ensure that the voice of all those who are here tonight have an opportunity to share their thoughts and concerns as well. The second thing I will say is that this can be a topic which might create division, and I want to point out that everyone who's here is here tonight because of what they have in common, and that is you are all here because you believe that we should have a quality educational experience for our students. So while you may differ, it is my sincere hope that the victim of COVID-19 does not include our civility and our sense of community. So please be respectful to others when they are speaking, as you will enjoy that respect when you are. At this time, I have the signup sheet. So, I'll give you a quick overview of a few key points. Was this available at the back of the room?
Yes.
So you have this one-page sheet. One of the comments that came out of our discussion early on was that a 30-page plan may be necessary, but it is very difficult for the public to get the nuts and bolts. And so something we worked on is a one-page form to create a little bit easier way to see where we stand at the moment. On this form, you will find the general guidelines. The first box details a number of the basic premises and policies that we will follow. It talks a little bit about some of our guiding principles. I will not read that to you. The second point talks about communication. The communication is very important, as you will learn shortly, that we have continuously updated reports, and while we will get reports from the South Dakota Department of Health, the fastest and most accurate way for us to track the cases in our community and specifically in our district is for you, if you are a parent, to report that directly to our school district. At the moment, you know that it is a positive test. So we do expect that. It is not compulsory. When a positive case is identified in a building, notification will go out to you very much the same manner we did last year. So you will be notified if there's a case in the building by email, and you will be notified by phone if your child, student is a close contact. Face coverings. This has been a big part of our discussion, and I also want to acknowledge and recognize publicly the over 90 emails that I and the board have received. Some personal, some to the board email, and if you emailed the board, it did go to every member. And expressing your thoughts, those were all read and considered and taken into account, and I appreciate sincerely the time that each of you put into preparing those remarks, and for caring to send those to us to guide us and help us in our decision-making process. Out of that, we have come with this proposal, which we will be voting on tonight, that it is our belief that given the current state of case in Clay County, and specifically cases in the Vermillion School District, that we will begin the year with optional as the face covering policy for all students, staff, and visitors. This will remain the policy as long as the caseload within each building remains below 1.5% of that building's entire population. That population number includes the students, staff, and people who are there on a full-time basis, aides, etc. That approximately based on last year's numbers, and we will update this number when we have accurate indications for this year. So probably the first or second day of school will revise that, but we believe this would be approximately five students in Austin Elementary, five students, staff, or employees in Austin, six in Jolly, five in the middle school, and six in the high school. If we should reach that 1.5% threshold, where we have five or six simultaneous cases in one of those buildings, that building will move to a required face mask policy for a two-week period from the date at which it exceeds that threshold, and that two-week mask mandate will remain in place. At the end of that two weeks, if that building has fallen back below the 1.5% threshold, then the mask will return to the optional policy. This is a building-by-building policy. So if Austin is masked, that does not necessarily mean that Jolly is, or the middle school. However, due to concerns on busing, if one school becomes mask-required, busing within the district to and from school or between schools, say for, at the end of the day, will be required of all students who are on the bus. Because students from every building mix, that was the safest way to ensure the protection is there. We will also evaluate and look at activities busing depending on the students that are in that activity. So if an activity is combined high school, middle school, then, and that's very much our, most of our activities, then activities transportation would also be mask-required. As we continue on through that, you see a number of things pertaining to testing. We have an increased testing capacity such that we can provide in-school testing with rapid tests. We have a good degree of confidence in the accuracy of those tests, and we are discussing ways to increase our staff to make sure that that testing is easily done within a day at any of the buildings. If your child is symptomatic or comes to the health office with concerns or symptoms, they will be face masked immediately, and you will be called and asked to pick them up, and you will be asked if you would give verbal consent for a COVID test right then. In the instance where a student or staff member does test positive, we will have the same 10-day isolation policy that we have ended with. When it comes to quarantining, we do have one change, and that has to do with, for those who are vaccinated, they will not be required to quarantine. So if a student who is over the age of 12 is vaccinated and a classmate is test-positive, that vaccinated student or staff member does not become a close contact who would then be required to isolate or be out of school. And then you'll see some language about testing out. That actually is no different than how we worked at the end of last school year. Activities. We'll begin the year with normal activities. Should we exceed that 1.5% threshold, then the board would begin discussing whether or not we would need to have attendance restrictions or other requirements in place aside from the then-mandated mask that would go into effect as previously noted. And then finally, as I hope everyone is aware, that we do have a remote learning option, that students in the district, anyone enrolled in the district who wishes to opt into Black Hills Online, you may do so, and this is at a semester-by-semester basis, and the school district will cover the cost of that program. So, there is the brief overview. I'm going to ask board members, Mr. Alvey, if there's anything I have missed.
No, I just think that just a recognition of the board's commitment to trying to make this work, as well as the staff and the community members that were part of the return-to-school plan last year and morphed it into this year's plan, and thanking all the people who are obviously here tonight about this issue, as well as the ones who've reached out to us. So, a lot of input in talking with other school districts and other folks that have gone through this to help put this plan together. So thank to all those folks.
Board members? Okay. At this time, then, I will call our first visitor, Catherine Berkland.
I'm going to go for the green one, because I think that's what I should talk into.
Yep.
Thank you for your time. My name is Catherine Berkland. I am a Vermillion resident, and thank you for the time to talk on the return-to-school plan. I have a middle schooler and a third grader, so I have students at two of the schools that we're addressing today. My first point, I wrote them down, so I wouldn't be too nervous to forget them. The first one is, I wanted to just acknowledge that it is your job to balance a lot of concerns, and sometimes those are needs that you need to balance, and sometimes those are wants that you need to balance, and I appreciate that that's not easy to do, and that's not easy to compare across people what those needs or wants might look like. And so, I don't envy that this is an easy decision for you, or that this is, I don't need to suggest that it's somehow a slam dunk or an easy choice. When we think about the costs and the benefits, I would ask that you remember the, and think about the magnitude or the size of the costs and the benefits imposed on children who cannot be vaccinated yet. While wearing masks is uncomfortable, and you can't see my smiling face, and you can't see when my kid is confused and tell him how to work on multiplication, the children who can't be vaccinated, the cost is very high. I am by trade an economist, that's my job, is to measure costs and benefits of things. It is very hard to measure and to weigh when costs are very concentrated and benefits are very dispersed. In the case of wearing masks, the benefits are really tangible to those children that we're protecting, and the costs are dispersed across a lot of people. It's a very small cost across a lot of people, but it is a very big benefit to a small subset of kids. If we do not require masks, it is a very large cost, exceptionally high cost for some of those kids. They have no way to avoid it. They cannot be vaccinated yet, but it is a very little benefit to a lot of people. Now, I realize big and little is, is my term. It's not really hard, it's not really easy to measure, and as a parent who has a kid who gets easily sick, I understand this. I appreciated that your face covering allows for building specific concerns, and I would urge you to take that into consideration, that at the high school where children can be vaccinated, that is a completely different decision. Once my children are able to be vaccinated, I have no problem with no masks. Please, we can take off all the masks we want, because the cost isn't death anymore. So once the vaccine is, if you don't want to take the vaccine, fine, if somebody doesn't want to, but my kids don't have the choice yet. So please, can we just hang on a little bit longer with face coverings until those 12, under 12, have the option to take it? Okay? I wanted to end, I've had a couple people talk to me, and I'm very logical by nature, that's my job, and they said, "You really shouldn't use logic, because this is a very emotional decision." And so for many people, it's emotion, it's not logic. I will tell you that Vermillion is a great place to be. My kids have been sick. My kids have been the ones at home where people brought us meals, and the teacher made exceptions, and sent home the schoolwork. We've donated to GoFundMe. We show up for Kierfer Collins. This town shows up for kids that are in danger. This town shows up for those kids that need help. We just need to hold on long enough so that we can get to that point. So we're trying to ask for help before I need a GoFundMe page, and before I have a kid in the hospital. Could we just hold on long enough to get the vaccine? That's the request. The items that you put up today, I appreciate that, and I know that I'm not allowed to ask questions, I don't think, but I hope that you will perhaps address these in your future conversations. The one and a half percent people in the building, and the 10-day or the two-week period where we're going to have masks, is that a rolling situation? So if it's five in middle school, and one falls off and one adds, do we get three weeks? Do we get four weeks? Is that how that works? So that's my question, is could we be specific on that? My other question is how often will this be revised? Is, are you planning to meet weekly? Are you planning to address this at what speed? I will also express concern that self-reporting is very not easy to do. I would expect that parents who would not like to, don't want to vaccinate and don't want to wear masks might not be so easy to self-report. So keep that in mind, please, and I thank you for your time and your service on the board. It is truly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. And in terms of questions, I think clarification questions, absolutely. And so let me try to clarify both, two of those points as easily as I can. From a rolling standpoint, I mean, we, yes, it is rolling, but that, at the end of that two weeks, if we're still there, it's automatically another two weeks. So it's not like it would be two weeks from the middle. It's two-week periods as long as we stay above. So in the instance you described, we would actually be four weeks in that plan. Second, and I don't think I did mention this, right now, the board is planning to meet weekly for at least the next month, and then we'll evaluate at our next, you know, full, regular monthly meeting whether we need to extend those weekly meetings. But this plan, just to be clear, does not require a board meeting to implement the mask mandate. That trigger is in place so that it can be done the day it happens, or the day after. Okay. Our next visitor to be heard is Donna Schaefer. It seems silly, if I'm introducing you, that you have to state your name. So you certainly may, and as a longtime educator, I appreciate you coming to speak, Donna.
Well, I'll say, I'll just introduce myself. I'm Donna Schaefer. I taught in the Vermillion school system for 23 years. I taught first grade and third grade, and I just would like to address this from what my viewpoint as a teacher. To begin with, I'm sure all of you have watched many comedians, and they give a joke, and you watch their faces. You watch their faces as much as you watch, hear their words, and their expressions on their face determine, to the most part, whether it's funny or not, and you engage yourself in that manner. Well, teaching, especially in the lower education groups, is very important in that manner also, because a child needs to see how you form letters. They need to be able to respond in like manner, and it's really very interesting to know that C, D, E, G even, all sound the same. And you recognize the difference when you see the way the teacher says them, or when you say them. And so having masked faces is very difficult in the lower education, of the lower students in education. They really need to see your face, but they, you need to see theirs. And in fact, there are times when you actually will have to take your fingers and help them form those sounds and those letters. And so wearing masks is, really makes it more difficult, and their learning is slower or nonexistent in some cases. If they can't see you, if you can't see them, you do not know how you're, they are reacting to what you're teaching if you can't see their faces. And they can't see, if you have to wear a mask as well, they can't see the expression that you put on your face. They can't see, or, or any of those things, if you got a mask on. And that's very important for them to be able to use those things to learn what they need to learn. And so what I am saying is, don't go back to masks unless it's absolute necessity, because it's detrimental to the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Hall. And forgive me if I don't read your name correctly.
You're good. You're good. I'm not sure I want to follow her. She did a pretty nice job. But my name is Ted Hall. I have three kids. Moved here from another town last year. Think you guys do a tremendous job. Understand this is extremely difficult for everyone. You got a lot of different opinions, and you got a lot of ways to, for everyone to come up with something that supports their position, right? So, don't envy you. Just want to give my two cents for what it's worth. I am a big believer that my kids, looking at them last year and their situation is, you go to school for more than just straight academics, how to read, how to write, how to do those things. I can do that from home, to be honest. You go to school for social interaction, learning how to read people's body language. I'm in sales, so those are things that I, I deal with on a regular basis, and creating friendships, actually dealing some difficulty through either somebody saying something not nice or those type of things, those are all things that help our kids grow, okay? It's not just A, B, C, D, E, learning curve, anything. And as I saw my kids, and fairly upset about whatever possibilities might happen, I looked at what we're missing, and we're missing the external when we're fully masked. I appreciate the guidance. It's concrete. It's much better than the significant, all these different words that create a lot of uneasiness, because it becomes opinion, but I'm confident with that, I'm comfortable with that. I think you've, you've done the best you can to protect students when things go south, or who want to be protected. And I can tell you that we've told our kids, knowing from a meeting, hey, kids are going to get picked on with masks. I can tell you, my kids, I have told them regardless of what we do, you will not say a word to anyone wearing a mask, because that is their choice, and that is okay, and they may need to wear that. Just because you don't have to, and that should be a parent's responsibility as well, that that's out there. Nobody needs to be picked on for doing it, either way. If you're there for personal choice, you have to respect their choice. And those are things that I think people can learn from, and our kids can become better than maybe what we are today in the way we treat this mask and no mask thing. So take, take into account those things, put in the road, the roadmap that makes sense, but let the kids grow socially as well. Let them learn that other people have a different decision, and that's okay, just like I will today. You have the right to make a decision. I have a right to then decide what my decision is off of that. So I do appreciate the advance as well. But that's where I stand. I think you guys have done a nice job. This is so much better than what I was looking at as of this morning, when I was coming to talk, but let our kids grow that way, very much like what the lady in front of me said. I strongly appreciate what she said. Thank you.
Thank you. Creighton Thurman.
Good evening. As you've indicated, my name is Creighton Thurman. I'm a practicing attorney. I have a law office in Yankton. However, I have been a Vermillion resident since 1991, and I have a son who's going to be going into middle school, so I am here actually representing probably one of my most important clients, and that being a dad and my son. And I am happy, I don't know that I'm happy to see the document on the board, but it certainly makes me feel better than that, which I was, spent a fair chunk of the morning researching and the information that was out there, because the one-page document that came out on August 3rd seemed to be in conflict with the document that was prepared on July 1st, and caused me a great deal of pause, because I believe that, yes, we have to weigh the interests of the, of everyone in the school district. However, I think that, given the present situation that we're in, that we're in a nominal spread situation, that Clay County, we've been, been spared a number of the problems in other parts of the state have been spared, as well as the country. I think that in listening to Ms. Schaefer speak, and remembering my teachers as I was growing up, yes, teaching is a very interactive, you need to be able to see, and I think for the best educational experience and for the choice of our students and to teach our students to govern themselves, as well as my son, I think leaving a choice factor in place as to whether they feel that the face masks are beneficial and that protects them, or whether they feel confident enough in either that they've had the, had the virus, or confident enough that the family has put in place measures. or confident enough that the family has put in place measures such that that adequately safeguard the situation. I think that we need to leave it up to the the choice of the residents. I believe, and as the previous speaker said, what I see before me on the on the screen and what came out a little after five today certainly puts me in a better position because I had worked on my fire and brimstone speech most of the most of the afternoon as to what I wanted to say. However, at the end of the day, I wanted us to see some compromise. And I think that this gives some compromise, whether 1.5% is is a good number or a bad number, but at least it gives us a starting point. We also know that with a two-week trigger that we're going to go back and review it and that we aren't going to be under the the same issues and have to look for other avenues to maybe find relief from an ongoing mask mandate. So I would support at least the choice option at this time as it has been presented. I would commend you on on your work because I think it it shows compromise based upon the two positions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Stephen Church.
Hello, all. My name is Stephen Church and recovering from a slight injury. However, during my injury, I went ahead and got the Moderna vaccination. I got both Moderna vaccinations. And I was looking up research on vaccinations and how in 1757, that's when we first started, believe it was measles, then we had polio, and then we had smallpox. Even though those all started back in the 1700s, we didn't actually get effective vaccines until sometime around the 1960s. What I would like to recommend is measles, polio, smallpox. That's all required to go to school. Having a full facial beard, I get really annoyed at having to wear this because it's incredibly warm and discomforting. What I would suggest would be, after more research and after we can give the vaccines to children under 12, I would definitely recommend pursuing that route just so we can, again, I after getting my Moderna, I thought, okay, no more mask. However, I've learned every place has their own standards and everybody has to wear their pick or choose whether or not they want the mask or not. That's why I always carry one with me. And I have three clean ones stored away in my car just in case. There was an incident up in Sioux Center where I got into a argument with one of their HR people because the company required me to wear a mask. And though I chose to wear my mask, the HR manager singled me out and said, no, you must wear our cheap mask. So when I put the cheap mask underneath and then put mine on, I was still scolded for wearing two masks because they couldn't see their masks. So I switched it up, had mine underneath and theirs on top, still scolded. However, it it was more effective, but it was irritating. Now that I've got the both Moderna, I feel it's a lot safer for me as a type 1 diabetic. And that's just what I wanted to try bringing up and seeing if more research could go into such.
Thank you. Ryan Church.
My name's Ryan Church. I'll keep my remarks short. Also, this is Aaron. He's next on the list. He didn't realize there are going to be that many people, so he does not want to speak after me. I just want to say that I am opposed to a mask mandate for children. I believe that it should be optional. If you want to wear it, you should be able to. Aaron actually has a speech impediment and has been pointed out earlier. It's extremely hard for him to learn how to speak without being able to see the facial structure as he's making words. On top of that, because he does have the speech impediment, a lot of people have a real hard time understanding what he's saying. And that makes him super self-conscious and shy and doesn't want to speak in front of people. So in my opinion, I feel like it's hindering his social growth, which may lead to problems down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Nelson.
Good evening. Like I said, Todd Nelson. I'm also relieved to see some changes. I was on vacation last week, so I was able to watch some of the Zoom meeting that happened and pieces between interruptions with my kid, but that's that's big bad. So thank you to all of you. Lots of thought and hard work and the time that you've given away for this. I'm appreciative of those behind the scenes, those who have contacted your folks to maybe force some of these common sense changes to this plan. Mr. Alvy, I want to appreciate your words you made at the Zoom meeting. I think you represent a large amount of parents that are frustrated with this whole thing. We're all frustrated, but we all have our own way of of that right now. But so I wrote my my statement based off of how I felt the last meeting ended, which felt like masks are going to be mandatory again. And so I'm going to read it because I wrote it and I'm here. So anyway, like I said, my name is Todd Nelson. I am the father of two girls. One's going to third, one's going into fourth grade this upcoming school year. I wanted to begin by stating I am definitely not anti-mask wearing. My family, my wife and I and my two girls, we wore masks anytime we were asked to, all of last year, had no problem with it. We made the very difficult decision as a family, as our family, not to celebrate Halloween through Christmas with our extended families because we want to protect our children and our extended family members because we just didn't know. None of us knew. We still have a lot we were learning. That was a tough decision. It was hard on some of our family members that we told this to. I wouldn't change it, though. I was in favor last year of doing everything possible to keep students in school in person. I approached Jim at one time, appreciated him for everything you guys were doing last year to keep school in person. I love sports. You can cancel them all if it means keeping kids in school. That's all that matters to me. However, I am no longer in support of enforcing mask mandates at this time for students and staff. Even though I am vaccinated, I will not allow my eight, nine-year-old girls right now to be vaccinated if and when they become eligible. I will continue to trust that being vaccinated was the right decision for me and my wife. But I have distrust knowing that there is absolutely zero long-term data or information because it just we just don't have the time for that. If you think that parents will line up their children that are under the age of 12 to be given a vaccine that is still only approved for emergency use today, that can change any moment, that has no long-term studies completed, you're you're crazy. After a year and a half, it's obvious that kids are not at great risk from COVID. I know kids get COVID. I'm not a COVID denier. All summer, though, kids have been going to daycare, going to friends' and family's birthday parties, having sleepovers, visiting grandparents, going on vacation, all of it. Most adults have basically returned to their pre-COVID ways of life if you pay any attention to reality. It doesn't make sense to me to implement a mask mandate at this time before school even begins. Again, I wrote this earlier. If you vote in favor of mandating masks with no exceptions, you better have been wearing one all summer. You better have been wearing one anytime you're around a family member outside your own household. If you went on vacation recently, you better have worn a mask around other families you may have gone on that trip with. If you have attended a public event or visited a place of business in Vermillion or another community this summer, you better have worn a mask. If you have a child, they better have worn a mask if they went to a friend's house or traveled to others or to other sporting events with. Princess Plunge is absolutely packed on a beautiful summer day during the week with all the daycare kids being there. The point is, kids have been around each other all year. If you vote for mandating masks, and I'm not talking from day one, I'm talking till the end of the year. Thank you. If it's to me, it's a bad sign if we're the only school that mandates masks. I appreciate that that's not happening right now. I want the parents to have that right, that decision for what's best for their children. So again, thanks for all your hard work. I appreciate the changes and thanks for everyone for being here, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Chet Barney.
Hello, I'm Dr. Chet Barney. Just wanted to state my my opinion personally as a loving parent of three kids, one with asthma, and professionally as an organizational behavior researcher, I wanted to provide you with my thoughts on the mask matter. I am strongly against mask mandatory, making mask mandatory in the public schools. If parents want the option to to mask their children, they are more than free to do so. And that's always been that way. But a mandate should not happen again. I saw firsthand the psychological effects that man the masking and other school mandates had on many, many children this past year. Kids shown signs of more depression, anxiety, timidity with adults, as well as aggression towards other kids in the schools due to the masking mandates forced upon them. That should never happen, especially to developing young minds. Other issues with masks were medical, such as increasing cold sores and rashes on kids' faces. And according to Mayo Clinic, quote, "Most children who become infected with the COVID-19 virus have only a mild illness," end quote. So why place more psychological trauma on our children if it is not medically necessary? Please do not force a mask mandate upon our kids. I want to make a second point that is not on your agenda item, but I want you guys to hear my thoughts on this just so you can have this future discussion with your board. Peanut butter restrictions in elementary schools need to be removed. Last year in the in elementary schools, I heard that there were zero allergies to peanuts, yet there was still restrictions on that. And my kids love peanut butter, so just want to put that in your minds for future discussion. This is my child, my second child, Colton. Do you want to say something? Okay. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Julia Wessel.
Hi, I'm Julia Wessel. I have three kids currently in the district, two at the middle school, one of whom is a nonverbal autistic child who is in special education. And I have another child who will be going into fourth grade at Jolly. I've emailed you all. I'm not going to regurgitate those comments. I'll save that. And a lot of the discussion that's happened here has added to my list of comments. The first thing is that a few people have expressed concerns about being able to see your face. And I just want everyone to know that our speech professionals and our special ed teams went above and beyond last year to make sure there was face shields, plexiglass in between students. Those students who needed that assistance, they were given that assistance, they were able to see your face. So I while I do appreciate that is a significant concern, that concern was addressed by the teachers that you guys put that trust into. And I want you guys to know that that is should not be a concern here. Another thing I would, since it got brought up, I would like to remind everybody that smallpox was eradicated by vaccines. And we do not require a smallpox vaccine ever because it's eradicated. And I'm assuming he was thinking of chickenpox. A few people have mentioned, you know, that we don't have much concern here. We have minimal spread according to our Department of Health. We've been playing all summer. My kids, including my unvaccinated nine-year-old, has in fact been at the pool almost every day. But as everyone here should know, this town is significantly different during the summer than it is in the fall. Our population pretty much doubles. People come back from all over the world and come here. And they bring all of their germs with them, which is why this town has the nickname of Germillion. And we get sick every September and every January, and everyone knows it. And that is before COVID. So it it's not the same. And I'm a little concerned, I I and I don't know how to explain it, but our local Department of Health has us at minimal spread while the CDC has us at substantial spread and enacted an eviction moratorium against our county. I don't know where the data is different, but if it is, that's a little concerning when you consider that the current the current state of affairs is different than it was in May. We didn't have Delta in May. We didn't have hospitalizations affecting mostly people under 30, including children, back in May. And the one thing that I have not heard from any school board meetings I've listened to, any conversations I've had or this plan in front of me is, how do you explain the COVID situation being less dangerous to children today than it was in May when we had so much more precaution? I don't understand this rationale. And it's not an emotional thing. It's simply that's the data. So what's I would really like you guys to just explain that, frankly. Most of the rest of my comments are really just questions. Well, not exactly. I have a couple. Sorry, I started making notes. Someone said there was zero long-term data on vaccination on this, and we have zero long-term data on COVID in children. I would like to remind everybody that Epstein-Barr virus that causes mono in children and teens also is considered to be the cause of most multiple sclerosis, which is a devastating life-altering disease. And I contracted COVID in December. It was very mild. I got vaccinated, no, no problem with the vaccine. And yet by April, I'm having devastating neurological problems, which are still affecting me today. And they've narrowed it down to it's probably COVID, but they don't know because between their 120 years of medical experience, they've never seen it before. They've never seen an MRI like mine before. And you are asking us to risk, really all children, but especially children under 12, to go what I'm going through at some point in their life, to develop the new version of MS that's from COVID instead of mono. Most of my list was actually questions. I realize you can't answer them, but I'd like to know what data is being used to compute the building caseload? How are you collecting that? Again, as somebody already mentioned, if it's self-reporting, I don't really want to miss 10 days of work to watch my kid either. So I'm not sure how many people, if you're not required to test them, you know, they could just say, oh, he's at vacation with grandpa. He's not sick. And I would like to know if the principals can choose to place children whose parents want their kids masked and want it enforced. Can we have an in-school pod? Can there be one classroom per grade level where the kids are masked, there's precautions, it's enforced? I realize it would be very burdensome if it was just a few, but if you own one class, maybe it's not so burdensome. Thank you for trying to compromise. I think it's great for the older grades, but it's just not suitable for under 12. Thank you.
The question of caseload is a good one, and I apologize for not mentioning that earlier. We we talked about that. We talked about the discrepancy between the CDC and the State Department of Health. And I checked, the CDC website does indicate that they expect those discrepancies will occur because of lag in reporting and that their recommendation is you follow your State Department of Health numbers. We feel more comfortable using our local control numbers because as at least as of right now, the State Department of Health only reports once a week, every Wednesday based on Tuesday 1:00 PM. And so we've worked with Amy Askew, who kept counts all last year, charted them beautifully for us. And so we will be using obviously self-report, but in addition, any in-school tests and the reports that we get. So if someone does test positive somewhere else, it will come back to the district. So we think that gives us a the ability to track case counts daily, which we would not be able to do otherwise. So that's what we are planning to use is our local numbers within each building. So our next speaker is Susie Hansen.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to do this. I have to admit, even though I keep abreast of news, local news, this is the first time I'm speaking in front of a meeting like this. Well, my son George starts second grade next week, which means he's going to a different school building. He's having mixed emotions. And right now, he's lamenting the differences in the playgrounds between Jolly and Austin. It's a big topic of discussion. He's writing his Austin Teachers Thank You Notes with Cow and Spoon gift cards because he already misses them so much. And that was not the parent's idea. That was all that was all him. And yet he's excited to go to Jolly to see his friends who are a grade ahead of him. And yet, he's excited to go to Jolly to see his friends who are a grade ahead of him. And meanwhile, I'm trying to find kids KN95 masks online without getting scammed, because that's what the CDC is recommending for kids. I'm looking at the face covering sections of the updated return-to-school plan that was released earlier this evening, and now I'm wondering how many teachers and staff at Jolly are vaccinated? I'm wondering how I'm going to get George to keep a mask on all day at school if Jolly doesn't require masks consistently, starting with the first day of school. As we became aware of case increases here in Vermillion, because they did increase in the last few weeks, my husband, and also as the CDC changed their guidance on masks, as we're all aware of, my husband Tim and I were explaining to George, we tried to take the logical approach with an almost eight-year-old, which probably, you know, might not be the best route, we tried to explain to him that the situation is, it's more dangerous now, kids his age and younger are getting sick and having to stay in the hospital. And we've asked him to wear a mask at summer BSA these last couple weeks, and he will start the day with it, but when we pick him up, it's under his chin, because if it was a rule, he would follow it. But if it's optional, and most of the other kids aren't wearing one, like I said, it's under his chin by the time we pick him up. So then, as parents, do Tim and I, do we scare him into masking? Do we go into detail about how sick kids are getting, how sick they're getting, how kids are getting vented? Kids as young as four with no underlying health conditions are getting vented in these areas where they're having a surge right now. Do we tell him what that is, what it looks like? Or do we sign up for online learning and cut him off from his new school for a whole semester, and try to do what we did last year, which, well, doable, was, I think, the most difficult thing I've ever done, to keep my child at home until I could get vaccinated? I've also been thinking about all the important things our school district already does to create an environment where our students can learn. How you all are evening the playing field, you know, if you will. We know kids can't learn if they don't have school supplies, or if they're hungry, we help make sure they have shoes and clothes and winter coats and emotional support, and now we know the Delta variant has made the current playing field uneven in a whole new way. We know more kids are getting sick from COVID now than earlier in the pandemic, maybe not here, but we all know our situation changes when USD is back in session. We know kids under 12 aren't eligible yet for the vaccine, some kids our age eligible, they can't get vaccinated for health reasons, and none of the vaccine-eligible students, teachers, or staff they'll encounter in the course of their school day have to be vaccinated. Those students, teachers, and staff who are vaccinated, we know can still catch and spread the Delta variant if they're not masked. You know, we talk about, kids can't learn if they're homesick with COVID, or if they're in the hospital. Kids can't learn if schools have to close because of an outbreak and their parents can't stay home with them. There was so much concern, and rightly so, about kids missing school, falling behind. Well, the best way to decrease those odds is to have a consistent mask mandate from day one. Our first responsibility as parents and schools is to keep our children safe. You know, this is a chance to teach our kids a lot of things, the pandemic, it's not over. We can teach them things like science and critical thinking skills and media literacy, and on a very basic human level, we can teach them empathy and the value of a human life. So it's like the Austin School model that my son George memorized. I am kind, I am helpful, I am safe. So can we please model that behavior and require masks in the same way we did last year, at least at first? Please, can we hang on a little longer? To echo Catherine, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jacob Skelton. Thank you so much for taking time to hear from the crowd here, and love seeing everybody out. My wife and I were blessed to have three kiddos ages eight, six, and three, and we very much appreciate living in Vermillion and call it our home. Those of you, of course, on the board, I know what it's like leading, and not a lot of thank yous and a lot of critics out there, and whatever you do, you're going to upset somebody, so I really appreciate the, the plan that you've proposed, and was appreciative that masks were not required on the, the list there. I wrote down my comments, so I wouldn't forget them, so forgive me, I'm nervous that way. We live in a world that's strongly divided, and seems we forget how far we've come as a nation, so it's just amazing what we've come up through. August 1st, just a few weeks ago, was the 116th consecutive day in the U.S. that daily deaths were under 1,000, and the 52nd consecutive day, under 500 in the nation of 329 million people. Our own CDC data says you currently have a 99.41% survival rate, even before we figure in age or core mobility. So the fear that's sweeping the nation, I don't see as reasonable, given these numbers of the current trend lines. I strongly oppose the mask mandate school-wide for all students. I believe there's side effects that are as harmful as the proposed benefits. As an example, the UK has decided not to have kids in masks, noting the infection rates are low among the age group, and wearing them could lead to other developmental issues. And survival rates of the children in England over the course of COVID-19 has been 99.995% survival rate, and there's evidence that prolonged wearing can also lead to other harmful issues. I strongly like the option that you've provided here, that it is optional, and people have the choice to wear it if they choose to, just as I think it'd be wrong for people that would desire not to have masks, to force everyone in the school not to wear it as well. I feel we should have our own decisions and viewpoints and health situations that parents know best for their own kids, and so I, that's how I'd feel on that. I also strongly oppose any kind of forced vaccination for COVID-19. I know it's not for kiddos below the age of 18 yet, but these vaccines have been shown to be effective in our most vulnerable populations, and those who have had that, they've had that opportunity to get that, those primarily with, in the elderly population and also in the immune-compromised system. So that generally does not include all kids. I know it does include some, but as a mass level, it doesn't include most of them. We need to remember they are experimental at this standpoint, and the Moderna vaccines only authorized for 18 and above, and they've only now began to actually test in that age group of 12 to 17, and the study isn't set to be completed until next year in June. I also am sad to hear the consideration of incentivizing children to get the vaccine. As I mentioned before, the age group is not the primary risk for this virus, and there are, we don't know the long-term effects of the vaccine at this time, since it's still experimental in nature. Before COVID-19, doctors and researchers had tried to make a coronavirus vaccine for years with no success, and they found that animal trials, that the animals were sterilized and often acted as a pathological primer, meaning once a vaccinated animal was exposed to the actual live virus, the body actually overreacted and died. The experimental vaccine, being widely pushed, was produced in less than a year, and animal trials were skipped, and no long-term studies done. There are a number of deaths that have come back as a result of the vaccine, and so I feel like it's cause for caution, especially with our most, our kiddos. I do not understand why we need to risk an experimental vaccine with such a high survival rate in these age groups. So we're all taking a risk, whether you choose to take the risk of taking the vaccine, or you take the risk of having COVID and having the potential chance there. Because of this, I strongly believe the best course of action is to leave the decision up to the parents in regards to vaccination or masking. Those who would like to do so have that choice, and then just as I feel it'd be unreasonable for one side to require vaccination, I feel the opposite as well. So we both need to allow each other the opportunity to make the decisions for our kiddos. As a family, we very much love Vermillion, and definitely praying that you guys have wisdom in this decision, and know that we're, we're with you. Couple questions I had was on the 1.5 threshold, I was curious where that came from, if there is a subset or something that that came from, and then I was curious on what that threshold would be for other influenza-type things, or illnesses in the past, of where that would line up for past infections. Thanks so much for your time.
Regarding the question of where the threshold came from, we sat down as a small group and talked about that. We analyzed all of the case numbers from last year, and we would have crossed that 1.5% threshold, I believe, first week of October, is that right, Amy? Okay. And it seemed like it was, I don't want to say that it was picked out of thin air, we, we tried to identify, and we looked at some other districts who were recommending a 2% threshold, I don't know where they started. When we looked at our numbers, 1.5 seemed like a more reasonable balance between keeping us in school and providing a measure of safety. Okay, our next speaker, Shannon Fairholme.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Fairholme, and I live on South University here in Vermillion. And first of all, I want to say thank you very much for all your dedication and hard work. I know how much it takes, and sometimes what a thankless job it really is. And as someone who has served, I know the amount of effort that it takes on a daily basis to be able to do the job that you do, and to be able to do it well, and to try and, and keep our children safe within our district. So I am grateful for the opportunity to share my thoughts on whether to mask or not to mask. Like so many parents here, what I have written is almost moot at this point. Wonderful to see the changes that were made on the return-to-school plan, I have my little red, yellow, and orange-green copy here. So, so I am grateful for the changes that you have made, and am appreciative of it. Like many of you, I've read the recommendations and studies and journals, and I'm not going to stand here before you and debate about literature, but what I do want to say is that back when our oldest son was getting ready to go into kindergarten, and I was at kindergarten roundup with many parents, we were told that the parent's job was to educate their children, and that the district's job was to supplement what we are doing at home. I would like to think that that is still the case. I know 16 years since the oldest was at that point, a lot of things have changed, but I would like to think that a parent still has the prerogative and the decisions to be able to help guide their own personal family. I have no doubt that with the threat that we currently have, and with our children starting school here in two weeks, I have no doubt in my mind that my children will be able to attend school, and they will be healthy, and they will be happy, and they will be safe, because the district will make sure that occurs, and it would be no different going back to school this year than it has been in other years in the past. And for that, I'm grateful for that sense of, you know, just, everything's going to be okay. I also want, once again, to say thank you very much for this. I know everybody's been bringing up the 1.5. I am personally for no masks, but I appreciate the optional point of view, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk today. First off, I want to say I'm impressed with the capability for remote test, or remote, rapid testing, I can speak, rapid testing in the schools, and I want to thank you for the remote learning opportunity here. I think one of the things that we learned a lot nationwide last year is that it does not work to have teachers teaching in two modalities. That wasn't just here in Vermillion, that was nationwide. It does not work for our teachers who are overburdened, it does, did not work for students to try to learn in, from teachers who are trying to teach in two modalities, so thank you for doing that, I appreciate that. You know, I stand on the mask mandate, so I won't belabor that, and, but I do want to ask that in our schools, if masks are optional, that we look across the nation at the districts who are employing bully, anti-bullying campaigns for students. We know that one of the reasons students get bullied the most is because they're different, they look different. So if we start now with some sort of campaigns for the students who have chosen to wear masks to keep them safe from bullying, and to start that from day one, we would appreciate that. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you. My name's Matt Fairholme, and I'm aware of the difficult decisions the school boards have to make frequently, and I'm grateful for the chance that you have given the public to make public comment on these important issues. And I, I have to admit, I was hoping to wax eloquent tonight, having prepared comments on a previous draft of this document, and having, not knowing that other people would make the arguments better than I. So you are saved from most of my prepared remarks tonight, for which I think most people are grateful, but it does appear that the public comment over the last week has caused changes to be made in the draft policy. Not having seen this draft document until a few minutes before this meeting, I am grateful for the fact that the voices apparently have been heard, and some moderation of, of the news accounts have been made. In fact, it was because of a Kelloland report last week that I was a little bit more concerned than I would have been otherwise. It stated back in August 4th, so far, 17 of 18 schools responding to a Kelloland Return to Learning survey had, have said masks will not be required for staff or students. And the next sentence was, Vermillion was the one school saying a decision will be made August 9th, right, which is tonight. And so my concern was, why would the Vermillion School District be so unique and different from the other 17 schools as to require a mask mandate? What piece of data, what piece of evidence, what information were you privy to that no other school or district was? And apparently, there was no such thing, and so apparently there is a modification of the proposal to mandate masks, for which I am grateful. I am grateful for the information about the 1.5% threshold number as well, I understand trend data, and I assume that's as good a data as anywhere else, but I don't know why 2% or 5% or 10% wouldn't be just as safe in the environment that we live in. There are numerous, as you know, studies on both sides of this argument, with studies, some suggesting that masks don't really significantly reduce the spread of COVID, and may do harm to children who wear them. Some of that information was already discussed. So the science is not settled on this issue, even throughout the world. And I just, for instance, England, not shy about locking down or mandating things, revised their guidance updated July 19th. It states, "Face coverings are no longer advised for pupils, staff, and visitors, either in classrooms or in communal areas." So in fact, around the world, the information is not settled. Now, the effort to provide a safe environment for our children is obviously a noble and appropriate effort, while an obvious sentiment, we know that the elimination of all risk is unrealistic. Even without COVID, the first few months of school, as stated before, have always been, we've always seen an uptick in strep throat, or colds, or similar kinds of ailments. And the argument that some people are, resist face masks, may sometimes create a straw man that those who oppose mask mandates don't care enough about others. Obviously, we know that's not the case. As we've heard before, the South Dakota Department of Health puts Clay County at minimal, at minimal risk of spread, no one in South Dakota ages 0 to 19 have died from COVID, and almost 60% of the state's population is vaccinated. So resisting a mask mandate, but certainly allowing them to be warned if desired... So resisting a mask mandate, but certainly allowing them to be worn if desired, serves the interest of the community. Those who wish to wear masks may wear masks, and those who do not won't be forced to. Frankly, more generally, I could talk at length about the impact of force in interpersonal relationships and organizations. And I could offer opinions about how viewing others as vectors of disease is unhealthy for a community, but I won't do that at this time. I'd rather hear from you about rationale about the 1.5% threshold, and why might that not be increased in days to come? Because I know all of you, and I recognize perhaps better than some the decisions, difficult decisions you have to make, I appreciate your opportunities for us to speak. However, this is not a difficult decision. Masks certainly may be worn, but knowing what we now know, they should not be mandated. Thank you.
Okay, here's the first name I'm not going to get right at the end. So, Jenica? I'm sorry. It's my eyesight, it's not. So will you pronounce your last name for us?
Yes, Jenica Uliberry.
Just like it's written.
I had a lot to say. I feel like the first speaker who came tonight said a lot of what I was feeling, where the cost-benefit analysis. I do a lot of logical thinking that way, and think about, yes, children are not as likely to get severely ill from this disease. However, it is possible for them to die. And even one of them dying or having long-term effects from this, which they have shown that that happens, is too many. My children, thankfully, are of an age where I was able to have them vaccinated. And I have done that, I did that immediately, as soon as they were able to, as soon as it was approved for their age group. I have severe reservations about the optional masks. I do appreciate that, you know, once cases do start to come about, that it would go to mandatory masking in the schools. But I also feel like if there's any cases in the schools, not a percentage, it should be mandatory masks, period. My other, I guess it would be a question is, I do see that vaccinated close contacts are not required to quarantine. My question for that would be, will they be required to wear a face mask for, you know, the 10, 7, 14, whatever it would be? So, but I wanted to thank everybody who came tonight, and we were all so far able to civilly discuss our differences, which is very appreciated, because I have been in situations where that has not occurred, including with my own family. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. In regard to your question about close contacts, we're still seeking some additional guidance on that level of detail. We wanted to get everything we could, but we weren't going to get everything worked out for tonight. Sorry. But I hope we will have that before school starts. I hope we never have to have that, is what I honestly hope. But I hope we will try to have that before school starts. David Beverley. And in case you're wondering, I only have three more names after this. But if you have not signed up and you'd like to speak, you will be given the opportunity. I realize I had the advantage of seeing where we were in the list.
Hello, my name is David Beverley. As the school year is coming soon upon us, I'd ask that you, with Board of Education, continue to enforce masks with everyone, kids as well as staff in our schools, vaccinated and those who have not. With Delta variant looming, there are a lot of unknowns. And as a concerned parent with two kids in public schools who do not yet all have access to a vaccine, for my six-year-old, I'd like to take all precautions possible. My 12-year-old has been vaccinated. The AAP, American Academy of Pediatrics cites masking as a "layered approach" to in-person learning. The article entitled "All Children Should Wear Masks in School This Fall, Even if Vaccinated," according to Pediatrics Group, NBC News, written by Alicia Fieldstadt, published July 19th, 2021, confirmed any of my suspicions returning to school. Another point, Dr. Anthony Fauci describes in the article, "When you have a degree of viral dynamics in the community, and you have a substantial proportion of the population that is unvaccinated, that you really want to go the extra step, the extra mile, to make sure that there's not a lot of transmission, even breakthrough infections among vaccinated individuals." I appreciate how diligent our schools with staff have responded and endured this far with all the extraordinary challenges. And we, as parents, are so grateful that schools remain open. In moving forward, I hope to have provided further evidence toward the reinforcement of masks and their relevance in mitigation. We will continue wearing masks regardless. In addition to that, I was just kind of concerned whether the school board is requiring staff to be vaccinated. To me, it's like, it's a no-brainer. I think it's, I believe that getting the vaccine should be required. It's not a choice for people. And when you're choosing not to do that, you're putting people at risk. Just like nurses would be required in hospitals to be vaccinated, it's not a choice. They're oftentimes mandated. I guess the point in closing was that there were a number of cases that pointed to not wearing masks with younger children, and how that somehow lessens their instruction, exchange. I don't think we're talking about any ideal conditions for schools right now. We're operating under uncharted territory at this point. So I would just ask that you take all necessary precautions and put those in place. Thank you.
Terry Amundson.
Good evening all, good evening board. My name is Terry Amundson. I have a daughter who's a senior in high school, who also had to go to summer school two years ago because when they went to distance learning, she wasn't able to do the distance learning. I want to let you know, I'm totally against mask mandates, totally against any kind of forced vaccination on anyone, including staff. We've heard a lot of people talk about emotion here, mostly about emotion, not very many about facts. The few people who did bring up facts were right. The facts are on the side of no vaccination. We haven't had a single child die in all of South Dakota. This is not dangerous for children. The only danger to children is the psychological damage that happens from wearing masks and being intimidated by their, the school board, by their teachers, by the staff. Another thing I found curious about your order today is that you claim that you want to shut down or require masks for two weeks if you get over 1.5%. But at the same time, those 1.5% of people will not be there. You're sending them home. They're not allowed there. So what is the purpose of having masks when the people who have been confirmed cases are no longer in the building? We need to start talking about facts and quit talking emotion. Facts. And the fact is, my job as a parent is to protect the rights of my child, and to hold you all accountable to educate her. It's not my job. We pay taxes so you will educate our children. My daughter missed out on that two years ago. When you shut down the school, you all failed her. And I won't, you haven't heard from me before, but you won't fail her again, till you will hear from me again. Thank you.
Glenn Pulse.
Hello, Glenn Pulse. So I guess I'll keep my, basically, the facts. Because I'm in the school probably at least, well, several times a month I'm in the school, which I really enjoy being around the kids and the staff. And I was more concerned about the original layout that I read than I am currently with this one. But we are an educational facility, so take all emotion out of it. When we're going to set a standard for something like a face covering, even in my own business, when the COVID situation first hit, I started researching, what is going to protect my employees and myself and my customers? And I had a really hard time finding any really good information on what's an adequate face covering to prevent COVID. And even now, today, if you do some research, this is a KN95 mask, which whenever we go into your facilities and their students, we mask up anyway, and we've got a pretty strict sanitation program for our tools before. Even when I go to somebody's house, tools in are sanitized, tools out are sanitized. We have a protocol. And I believe when you have a protocol, there's not a lot of questions with your employees or your staff or anybody entering the facility. So I guess if the mask mandate is going to hit, I don't think 1.5% is going to take, it's not going to take a lot to reach that threshold. So I'm going to consider that this is a mask mandate at that percentage within a few weeks of school starting. I might be wrong about that. And like I say, my company's going to honor whatever requirements you guys have in a school. But what I would ask is that if you're going to set a standard, or you're going to set these guidelines, then set a standard for what is a mask? What is an adequate mask to enter your facility? Because according to the National Institute of Occupational Health and Safety, any mask that goes behind your ears is not an adequate mask in an occupational environment. Some masks with the straps that go behind the head are. I can find nothing that indicates any cloth covering as being considered adequate protection by our national institutes. So if we're going to have these guidelines, I'd like to see some training for the staff and students on when to mask, how to mask, what kind of mask. My company provided masks for some disadvantaged families last year. We probably will again if this mask mandate hits, just to help the community out. So standards and training, along with the guidelines, is what I would ask. And I do appreciate Amy Schweinli's comments about bullying and mask shaming. And I do hope that that's, if that does happen, because we know all the bullying, I hope that's addressed instantly. And I hope even out in the community, if people see it out in the community, they address it also instantly, because we don't need our kids bullied or shamed, or even adults for that matter, we don't need that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alexis Tracy.
The benefit of going last is, everybody said a lot of the things that I wanted to say. I've been through enough long meetings myself that I will try not to take up much more of your time. I do want to thank all of you, because I think it was clear from listening to your last meeting as well, whether we come here today disagreeing on things, you all have our children's best interests at heart. And I appreciate that very much, because it's difficult to sit in your shoes and make the best decision that you can, weighing those things. Appreciate consideration of those emails, and appreciate this response. One of the things that concerned me from the prior meeting, and I certainly voiced it in the email that my husband and I sent, was responding that graduated risk to response. And so appreciate that consideration, and hope you'll continue to consider that as you guys meet and go forward on that as to what those numbers are, and how you respond to the risks as things change and go. And the only other question I had for you all was, this was a really nice summary I heard at the beginning. Is there a more comprehensive plan with that? Have we gone away from the green, yellow, orange, red criteria? And so this is just much more direct in that response? Thank you.
Thank you. The lengthy plan will remain in place. One of the things, it needs to be modified so that it is consistent with this plan. The decision on whether we would maintain the color coding system is one that's still open for discussion. It's likely we would modify it if it's retained with thresholds along the way. But we wanted to get something out. You know, I'd want to say, I appreciate the public's patience, because I know there are people who wanted an answer two weeks ago. And I also appreciate your interactions tonight. It's been very respectful and valuable. Are there others who wish to address the board at this time?
Quick question.
Sure.
You explained that last year the 1.5% threshold hit in approximately October.
Right.
Do you have, you obviously have the data based on how often we've been in a masking situation versus not, based on last year's data? Do you have any way you could share something on the line?
I thought I had that chart with me, and I don't. My best guess from memory, and Amy, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I think it would have been probably four to six weeks. When we did hit that very peak, we did increase our restrictions within the building, and we then did see a decrease. So, you know, what I sincerely hope is that
Couple of months.
If we go up, we come back down. And that's what we did last year. And I'll remind everyone, we did start the year masked last year, but we also didn't have a vaccination rate, you know, well above, what's our percent for staff?
86%. What percentage was it?
86% have reported that they are vaccinated, and another 5% have reported having COVID and have natural immunity.
Yeah, so we have 86% vaccination rate among our staff, self-report. So there, you know, the situation has changed a little.
Yeah, I think there was last year, you're looking at two months.
Is there any rationale between 1.5%, or 5%, or 10%?
Over 1.5, it would be masked.
But is there any rationale for that? Why?
We believe that that is, at this point in time, the place where we would want to implement some type of mitigation to reverse the trend. Based on last year's trend data, that mitigation then caused a reversal in the cases in the school. And that when you have cases showing up, the concern is that there are other cases that are undetected, and it's to then slow spread. And we do have the quarantine numbers.
Is there any indication that that was effective, mitigation?
Our trend data last year suggests yes. Approach the podium. I'm not going to embarrass myself and guess whether you're Will or Nate.
It's okay. My name is Will Fairholme.
Thank you.
I'm going into my senior year of high school, and I thought you should get an insider scoop as a student. I know students from all schools, and I would just like to comment that it has, from my own experience at the schools, that the group that has been more effective about the bullying and the hazing and all that stuff is actually the group who doesn't want to wear masks. There was a portion during the student, the show choir season, where we had an issue with that. Me and some others got bullied and talked bad about for a substantial amount of time. And, well, another comment I had a question about was that the whole symptoms list, right, they correspond a lot with the flu and the colds, and just other common diseases, and how that would be, like, how you would be able to tell the difference if it was a COVID symptom or if it was just a cold or a flu, or something like that.
Sure. And right now, our plan would be with symptomology, which can be, it's a pretty long list, that we would ask that we would ask for the person to be tested or to quarantine. So that, that's the short answer, the only answer I can give you.
Okay, thank you.
And I do also want to say thank you to all the students who came tonight, too.
What happens if one chooses not to get tested?
Can you come up to the podium so we can? Otherwise, folks at home can't hear.
I'm pretty loud.
Sarah Taggart, and I'm just curious what happens if, uh, you know, they have a symptom, which could very well be an allergy, and they do not want to be tested.
That's a great question, and
That's all I have.
Never want to be stumped on that. I don't believe it would be any different than what we did last year. And Amy, I am going to put you on the spot. How do we handle those situations?
So last year typically, um,
Would you tell everyone who you are and your role, please?
Hi, I'm Amy Askew. I'm the school nurse for the district. Last year, we had obviously a lot of kids coming in with different symptoms. Anything from a sore throat to a slight fever to a headache is kind of considered one of the symptoms. So I would say this, we learned a lot of lessons last year about kids coming into the health office. At this point, we would mask them. If we were suspicious of COVID, maybe having they, them having a history of exposure or some really substantial symptoms, we would request COVID testing. But we would also consider just our normal, you know, allergies, headaches, migraines. Those things do happen. So I feel like there were a lot of lessons learned last year. Um, we will still try to catch any COVID-like symptoms as best as we can. We will often refer to doctors if, um, you know, if we don't have the ability to test or if a, if a family member would rather go to the doctor than have us test. But we still want to catch that COVID, so I would say we would just, you know, use our assessment abilities and make our best judgment calls.
Might I add, too, that Amy and, and the principals in the buildings added last year that they know their children very well. Some of our kids have been with us for years and years and have the same symptoms year after year after year. Every August, I get my allergies. Every August, I'm sneezing, I'm coughing. And so we have some documented history with some of our kiddos that we can rely on. And, and in discussions with moms and dads, we use that approach. We're obviously over cautious with COVID symptoms, but we also use common sense when we're trying to weigh the, the other options, because there's a lot of other symptoms that are very much emulated in the same things that Will was talking about, so.
Thank you. I think I got this one.
Yeah, I, I'm Nate Fairholme. I figured if Will would come up, I should, too. Yeah, I, I would just like to talk about how I was raised. In my household, we were all taught at a very young age, almost when we were able to listen, that we all have the right to choose. The right of choice has been given to us by our parents, by our individuality, and by, uh, other things. And I know in the school district, as a young age, I've done this all my life. I've been here all my life, and I know that we've been taught that we can choose. Sometimes in the little age classrooms, right, we think, oh, we have to get in line. We're being oppressed, right? I used to think that as a fifth grader, I hate standing in line. But that's not rebuking our choice, that's to cause order so that the class can continue. This is a very different situation. There is no choice in a mandate for anyone. And why should that be? I question why, right? I've been taught to choose. I know the students here have been taught to choose. We choose good things. We're kind. We follow the six pillars of character counts that we've learned in Austin since, oh, I don't know, I'm old now. A, a long time, a long time. But I would just like to share my opinion that I believe that a mask mandate rebukes my ability to choose for myself. And I know that kids are smart, no matter what age they're, eight, nine, 10, 11. They can choose, they know. They, they're not silly. They're not. They know. They're smart. They know the risks, and they have the ability to choose. I ask that we give them that choice. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nicole Voss, and I did write a lengthy email earlier on this, too. But I just want to clarify about the vaccine that I think some people aren't aware of. This, the vaccine does not kill COVID, right? It's just supposed to help boost your immunity to COVID. And so comparing it to other vaccines that did eradicate the virus, that they're not comparable. So they're already recommending boosters, because we've already known that it's, there's a variant out there. Where, where does it stop? When are we going to stop? It's been a year, now we have to get vaccinated, or they're supposed to, you know, you get vaccinated. I'm vaccinated, but for my kid, like my child, when there's a risk, any risk, right now, four kids, zero to 17, the risk of the vaccine outweighs the risk of COVID. So like the risk getting vaccinated, there's more risk getting vaccinated right now with those kids than there is getting COVID themselves with the 99.995% recovery rate. So I just want to be clear that those, those two viruses, they're not comparable. That's it.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Okay, we will move on in our agenda to old business. Our first item under old business is facilities update. And then the second item, for those of you who are interested, will be a discussion and vote on the return to school plan. We do need to do conflict and approve the agenda. Yep, thank you. Okay, so we are now onto our agenda. My apologies, and thank you, Shane. So are there any changes to the agenda as indicated?
None.
None from Mr. Alvey. Per request, we will, uh, we still have the agenda item on the high school handbook, but we will not have that included in our vote for approval at this meeting. We will do that at a meeting one week from today. But that's not really an agenda change, just to clarify that. Okay, conflicts of interest. I have reviewed the agenda, and I have none.
This is Rachel, and I have none as well.
Jim, I have none.
Carol, I have none.
Shane, I have none.
Very good. Okay, now, thank you, we may move to unfinished business, facilities review update on the bond election. Mr. Alvey.
I believe Mr. Kosher has some things about our absentee ballots. Just a reminder to our community that we'll be entering in our bond election for a new elementary school on October 5th of this fall in 2021. We did have recent committee meetings on our back, or, excuse me, our, um, building committee meetings, and we have, uh, two upcoming public events that will be coming forth and publicizing, uh, for public input again on the new elementary bond election. We're planning a meeting on September 14th at 7:00 PM at Austin Elementary. And we're also planning another public event on September 25th, uh, on a Saturday morning in hopes that it'll be at the public library. We haven't confirmed that yet. Uh, we'll also be doing some public engagement at Rotary and some other local clubs, but we would just want to make sure that if anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns about the potential bond election coming up in October, to please contact a board member or myself, and we'll try to get you, uh, the latest data and numbers on that. Uh, so Mr. Kosher, could you, uh, share with us a little bit about the absentee ballot option?
Right, absentee voting will start on August 20th. That would be about a week and a half from now on Friday. Uh, because this is a standalone election with only the school bond issuance question, issue on there, all of the absentee voting will go through the school district, and we will take care of that in the admin offices of the school. So we have got a list from the county as to anybody who had, uh, filled out an application for absentee voting prior. So we will send those out on the 20th, but if anybody would like to do that in person, um, those would be through the admin offices at the school.
Thank you. Item B under unfinished business, the updated return to school plan. So at this point, the discussion is primarily on these revised documents. So I will open it up to board discussion on this item.
I can start. First, I want to just thank the return to school committee. They have done some excellent work, and, you know, we, we had our meeting last week and provided some feedback, and they did not have a very long turnaround to be able to respond to that feedback. And, um, I appreciate the excellent job they've done in, in balancing concerns and, and trying to put everything into place. For me, I think when, you know, I want to make sure that we are ba, as a board, are basing our decisions based on the best sort of expert advice and guidance that we have. When I look at the South Dakota Department of Health DAF board this week, they have a big disclaimer at the top, "Our daily case rate is up 68% from last week." We are, we are increasing in cases, and the Delta variant is, is very quickly moving things. I like the thresholds that we have, but I'm critically concerned about this next three-week time period. We are different from many districts in that we have a big influx of thousands of people into our community over the next three weeks. And we saw last year when we had that big influx, we saw a huge spike in cases, because we do have people coming from all over the country. And we know with Delta that the variants are, um, that they're, and spread more quickly, and that they're more contagious. When we look at the South Dakota Department of Health guidance for the schools, there's a big section that says "schools and COVID." And when you click on it, it links right to the CDC guidelines, which suggests that we have mandatory mask mandates. So the best guidance that we have from the South Dakota Department of Health and from the CDC at this moment is to have a mandatory mask requirement. So I have trouble supporting the, the current plan as it exists. I'm not saying we need to have a mask mandate all year. I just think it's, it's more prudent for us to start. It sets the expectations for students right away that masks are going to be a part of your life this year, because we are pretty confident we are going to get over that 1.5% in one building or another. And so if we have those first three weeks where we can monitor what happens, that gives us a much better footing to start from than to start with nothing and have things sort of take off from, from that point in time. I also have the concern that currently we have, um, currently it says that if students are vaccinated, they will not be required to quarantine. But the current guidance is that you would still take a test three to five days later to show that you aren't, that you don't have it. We know that a vaccination does not guarantee that you won't catch COVID or that you won't transmit COVID, though it absolutely makes you safer and reduces the likelihood of the severity of that incident. Current recommendations are that you would mask for 14 days. And so, um, or at least that seven days that we know Delta is more likely to be transmissible. And so I think having a recommendation that, hey, if you're vaccinated, you don't have to, uh, uh, quarantine at home for that 10 days, but you need to, to wear a mask while you're in the building, at least until we can get you a negative test back to know that you're not going to be a risk to our unvaccinated students. We have so many families in this district that have kids across multiple buildings. So when there's higher risk in the high scho, I have one high schooler who is vaccinated, and I have one elementary school kid who's under 12 and isn't vaccinated, and they go home together at night. And so there's risk in one building, it's sort of, we, we transmit that risk across our families across those multiple buildings. I also recognize and empathize with the, the parents who have additional health concerns for themselves or for their students. Currently, the only option we have is for them to wear a mask without anybody else being required to wear a mask in that building. And we've been told for the last year, masks are more effective when everybody is wearing masks, not just the persons who are worried about the susceptibility. We have the Black Hill School online version, uh, the, the Black Hill School online remote option that the district will pay for, and I think that can be a great option. For kids under 12, though, it's not a full, it's not a full online class. It's basically a curriculum that you're provided, and you still need to have the ability, the financial ability, to have a parent who can stay home with that kid entirely. There isn't another option for them. And I think that, you know, we've heard parents, um, we've heard parents say, like, if there's a mask mandate, I'm going to go to another district, because there are districts close by that don't have this. I don't want any parents to leave our district. I want all of the, all of our parents to stay in our district and to find a way to make it work. But the truth is, you would have that option. You would have the option to pick from multiple districts in the region that didn't have a mask mandate if, if you so chose. Parents with more susceptible kids don't have that option. And I think that we have to be, we have to be sensitive to that. I've heard multiple parents say that, you know, this summer, kids are at the pool, they're at Hy-Vee, they're sort of all over the place. And I'll admit, when, after I got my vaccine, and they were saying, like, if you're vaccinated, you can take off your mask, you're safe to go, I was like, woo-hoo, like, I can't wait. And I'm, I don't have to worry about being a risk to my kid. But as soon as they changed the guidance and said, actually, if you're vaccinated, you can still give it to your unvaccinated kid, we went back to masking up. We went back to sort of being careful to keep our kids safe. And we have the option to not take our kids to Hy-Vee, to not take our kids to the pool. We don't have the option to not have our kids be educated. And so I want to make sure that we have kids in the building. My other big concern with the current, with not having masks is that the 10-day quarantine, which I think is what we have to have, and which is what the guidance suggests that we have for a close contact, if nobody in your class is masked, that rep, that drastically expands the number of people who are considered a close contact. If you're in an early elementary class, we were talking about this this morning, if you're in a kindergarten, first grade class, everybody in that classroom is a close contact, because those kids are all over each other, and they're little, like, you know, snot magnets. They're just sort of all over the place. And so that means that you have 20 kids who are now out of the classroom with no additional sort of remote instruction, 20 parents who are home with those kids for those 10 days. If all of those kids are masked, they're not close contacts. They're only close contacts if they were sort of had to take their masks off for that time period. So it's something else to consider in terms of how many kids we keep in our building. I would support this plan if we were able to put, uh, to start the semester, at least for a three-week time period, to where we could make sure that our cases are good, and then transition into this 1.5% threshold. But based as it currently is, I don't think I can support it.
Other comments, input?
This is Rachel. I support the return to school committee. I would eventually, as we kind of work through this, like to look at the close contact quarantine and how the vaccinated, or maybe those that wear masks, and how it does affect them. But otherwise, I would approve of the current return to school plan.
I appreciate the work of the committee. I greatly appreciate all of you who took the time to be here today or to, and/or to contact us with your thoughts and concerns over the past couple of days. Though this whole process of coming to this was a discussion and thoughts and ideas and information that may or may have not have been correct or was correct in the moment, but then it changed. So, um, thank you for what was brought to the meeting tonight. My, um, my concern continues to be our, uh, students that do not have the opportunity to get vaccinated yet. And hopefully that will change soon, sooner rather than later. I do have great confidence in our leadership in our elementary school buildings and the teachers and the staff there. I, I do believe that they will do everything they can do to, um, keep those kids as safe as possible, because that is a different situation than some of the other students find themselves in. And I, too, agree that the incoming students to USD and Vermillion makes us the need to be ever the more vigilant. But we have built in, uh, the understanding that we will be reviewing this on a weekly basis or more often if needed. So, um, considering these things, I will support this plan.
Any other comments?
I just want to thank everybody for coming, appreciate all the input. Thank the, um, school district, return to school plan, and I will support the plan as written.
Yeah, and I, I would be echoing everything again, thank you for coming. You know, we, we put a lot of thought into a number of things. We looked at what other districts were doing, we looked at what the recommendations were. And keeping in mind that recommendations, when you have to make recommendations for 330 million people, are different than when you make recommendations for 800,000, and when you make recommendations for 900,000. you make recommendations for 19,000 or a school district of 1,400 counting staff. It is not an easy decision. It's not an easy situation. I, you know, we looked at our data and for those of you that asked, I think 2% would probably be okay, but 1.5% is a conservative measure. I understand the concern with the students coming back. However, even last year, our district peak was six weeks after the start of school. You know, I, there simply isn't, you know, absolute link between those things. Yes, we invite and welcome the relationship with the, that we have with USD, but we also see that we were successful last year. USD was a masked environment and they were successful, I don't think as successful as we are. I have a lot of confidence in our community and our students. And I think this plan puts the control into the hands of those people whom it affects the most, the families and the students. If you can do everything, and that means not just in school, but everywhere you go to stop the spread, we may never get to a mask mandate. And I, that is, maybe I'm optimistic, but I believe we can do that. And I believe this plan can allow us to do that. So that's my personal thoughts on that. We continue to have work to do, obviously. There's some, you know, definitions, some working, looking at close contacts, et cetera. Looking at the CDC, they, you know, they define six feet and that's it. If both parties are masked, they say three feet in schools. I'm not sure three, you know, three feet is pretty close. And so we, we have to really look at those and figure out what works for us, but we can do that because we are fortunate to be at a point of minimal spread right now in Clay County, and I hope we stay there. And so I, I hope that that's, I believe that that is what will happen. Any other discussion or comments? Otherwise, we would need a motion to approve this modification to the return to school plan.
While you're considering that, I'll just pipe in real quick. I'd like to thank the students again for being here. And like Doug said, really, a lot of this is in our hands with our staff and with our kiddos. So we're going to continue to push the hygiene and the education and all the mitigation components that make good sense and common ground for all of our students and our staff. This group took this, this very seriously. The discussion and the diversity of thought really offered a lot of backgrounds that opened up minds of others and considerations. So I want to thank the administrative team and the representation from each of the school buildings in, in the district that came together to help to formulate this and of course, thank the public for their input. But we're excited to get back to school and we just want it to be normal for the guys and gals that are in the audience tonight. So thank you.
There is one thing I do want to add. I'm confident in this proposal because I also do like the testing protocols and I really do appreciate the testing supplies and Amy and our healthcare staff to be able to do that testing. That's a very important part of my decision is that we have that access to testing and that quick testing. So if there is a spread, we can get a handle on it. I was one that when school started for USD, it was 100 degrees outside and I was in that COVID testing line, testing 250 to 300 people. And I do not want that back, but it is amazing that we have testing capacity in this community now and I want us to take advantage of that. So if it does kind of start to spike, you know, do take those symptoms seriously, have access to tests, reach out to Amy. The university does testing, will have testing on campus again Monday through Friday. I have testing at the hos-, at the hospital, but I think that's an important part to me is that access to testing. So, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve return to school plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed modifications to return to school plan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
Nay.
That's a four to one vote. There are no abstentions. Return to school plan passes. No modifications.
Okay, we have letters A through Q if you guys are all hoping to stick around for the remainder of the meeting. It's pretty exciting stuff, surplus chairs that don't work. No, it actually, yes, we are going to take for board members and others, a three-minute bathroom break.
Okay. Board members, members of the general public, I'll call us back to order. Thank you. Just for clarity's sake, because we have no formal record of the agenda approval, I'm going to call for a new motion to approve the agenda as published and we'll vote again.
Motion. Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Rachel, second by Jim, to approve the agenda as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The agenda is approved. Okay. New business. Item A, approval of supplemental grants. Kevin, you think you can give us this in five minutes or less?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. At this time, we bring forward the supplement, budget supplement for the grant budget. We have got our Title I and Title IV grants. The Title IV grant rolls into the Title I and that is in total of $376,899. And the expenditures as quoted. The Title II grant, $94,467. The Title VI grant for $14,618. The Carl Perkins grant, $24,118. The Title I school improvement grant for $68,330. Then we have our ESER I grant. This grant wraps up in FY '22, so some of this was reimbursed in the past fiscal year and this would be to use up the rest of what we have remaining in allocation for ESER I. It is a mixture of capital outlay and general fund. And what we have for FY '22 is $205,813. And then we have our ESER II grant. This grant extends into FY '23. Our total allocation for this is just over 1.1 million, but, but the FY '22 total is And those would be the ones for approval for the supplemental budget tonight. We are currently working on the ESER III. That one will be primarily out of our next two fiscal years and we have an allocation for that of two point, just over $2.5 million, but we will have further discussion as to what that entire plan will be.
Okay. Questions on item A?
One additional note to that will be, one of the requirements under the ESER III is that we publicly disclose that budget as well as what the intended purposes and uses of those. You've been public in all of your meetings about the additional staff, any potential upgrades to any of our facilities, the extra mitigation efforts. And what we will do is we will work on that plan through this week and if we do have that board meeting next week, we'll make that as part of the agenda for that approval to be published by August 20th, which is a requirement from the Department of Education.
Okay. Item B then is the approval of surplus items, which appear to be lots of things that don't work, chairs, a few desks. Any comments or questions, concerns? No. Item C is the approval of the emergency bus pack. So this is when another district comes to visit, if their bus breaks down, they can use our bus unless they beat us, in which case they have to hitchhike. No, it's, it's a common agreement. That's what that is. The approval of policies under item D. So these require one reading only. They're on pages 19 through 24. So that is, let me get there. So the first one is BDDB. That's the agenda format that we discussed. So it would go into effect at our next regular meeting. So we would have a consent agenda that would include minutes, open enrollment, homeschool new hires, resignations and bills earlier in the meeting. All those items would still be published, but there would not be time spent going through them in the meeting. On item JED, which is the attendance policy. So that has to do with changes in the RAP program. Policy committee, you got any comments on that?
If you have anything, Mr. Frye is available if you had any questions of him.
Is Frye any comments on the RAP policy changes?
Good evening. I would recommend with regard to the RAP policy, there, there is new language in this, in the new version of the 2122 student handbook for that policy. But what we're really looking to do, and this plays so much with the theme tonight, but one of the things we real, the RAP policy, for those that you don't know, if you're not familiar with it, is it was a responsible attendance program. And it was a way of incentivizing good attendance by giving students the opportunity to earn either a percentage bonus towards their final exam or even the opportunity to get out of taking final exams in, in the second semester. It's, it became very obvious last year that there were problems with the idea of incentivizing attendance at school in the midst of a pandemic. And the RAP policy, when it was created, it preceded me, in fact, it preceded Mr. Huska as a staff member, so you know how old it is. It, it, we know it goes back to probably, it precedes the year 2000 and it was a, it was a product of a school improvement effort to improve attendance at Vermillion High School. And the feeling overall was that it, it did that job and it served that purpose. There's a strong sentiment amongst the staff right now that the incentive is too big. For instance, for, for earning RAP in the first set, first semester, you can get a 10% bump on your final. Well, if you happen to be a teacher that doesn't give a very big final, that, that has a very prominent effect. Now that, that's partly on the teacher, but there, there's been a lot of discussion amongst the staff that the numbers are maybe a little off. And so what we'd like to do is, we would like to change RAP to be a little less attendance based, but not eliminate that entirely. And so the revamped version of it that, that I have placed in the updated handbook was, was created through consultation with, with staff members throughout the spring semester. We gathered feedback from fellow administrators. We looked at policies from other schools, incentive policies both in our area, as well as from other parts of the country. And then lastly, I brought in members of student council, and we kicked around some ideas as well, so I had some student feedback on the issue as well. And the students would agree that it's a big incentive for them. They really, you know, it's, it's, it's important to them to have a way to earn a way out of final exams. And that's a little bit in conflict with where we come at it as educators, feeling it's important to teach kids how to take a final exam to prepare them for the next level. So weighing that out, the, the policy that you have before, before you, or the proposal that you have before you changes RAP to academic and incentive, or academic and attendance program, or AAP now, it asks, the two, the students should have no unexcused absences, meaning within that 48-hour window of an absence, we need a call, a note, something that goes in the computer that indicates the, the parent was aware of this absence and that it, it fell under the, the listing of what is considered an approved absence at Vermillion High School. And if, if that's the case over the course of the semester, no, no unexcused absences, that's the first criteria. The next one would have to do with, I'm doing this from memory at this point, there's another one in there that has to do with complete, completing assignments, no later, no more than three late or missing assignments. The idea being, get your work in. And if you happen to miss the teacher's deadline, get it in late, but at least get it in. There's a lot of value in partial points, even if the teacher takes off points for late work, or incentivizing the fact that we want the students to work towards this. I should mention too, that one of the challenges I put before the student group we met with was, how do we come up with an incentive program or policy that isn't just an ascent, an incentive for our very best students? And if you look at what we came up with, I really do believe that whether you're an A student or a D student, everything that we put there is achievable. A poor student can still work to get the assignments in. You know, a, a poor student can still work on making sure that they don't have unexcused absences. A poor student can still make sure that they don't have discipline referrals. And so in the grand scheme of things, we, we looked at this, and we said, here's, here's something that we can put forward as an incentive that is as much an incentive for that A student as it is for that D student. And getting out of finals for a D student might be a much bigger deal than it is for the A student. So that's, I guess, where we're at on RAP right now. And the last recommendation, I guess I would ask you to consider, is this truly is more of an, an incentive policy, which I think belongs in the student handbook for approval with the student handbook. I don't think this is, this no longer fits the description as an attendance policy. So my recommendation to you would be to consider striking RAP from policy JED in, in the board policies, and just leave this as a high school component to be approved in the high school handbook.
And since we are now approving handbooks, I don't know if we can take that recommendation right now without going, referring to policy committee, but.
Yeah. But any questions that you would have for me about RAP or how we arrived at it? I'm happy to answer.
Do you have any data on whether this has kind of widened the achievement gap for students? You know, I think about, as you were saying, being an incentive that will be easy for those students who are regularly attending and, you know, in doing all of the things, that they were probably already doing well in that class, or going to do well on that exam, and now they're doing 5% better. Whereas the students who are already struggling, you know, aren't getting, have we seen since it was implemented that that's, gap has widened? I mean, this would obviously help, because if we went from 10 to 5, so that's really good, but.
Yeah. Well, partly because this hasn't been something I've been able to put a lot of focus on in the two years I've been at Vermillion High School. I can't, I can't point to longitudinal data, data in that, that way. But I will say that it's, I, I think it hasn't been as universally applied across the student body as we would like. And I think as much as anything, it's, it's an incentive that's probably overdue for being freshened up, pitched new to the student body, and, and given, given the old plug and say, let's all work our hardest at trying to achieve this and earn a benefit from it and see where it goes. So I'm kind of looking at this year as being a baseline year for us to start gathering some data going forward.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
And then item JNAC, changes the policy that formerly was titled iPad lease charges, since we have laptops and Chromebooks, to device lease charges. Moving on, the next items are, will, this is the first reading, so they will come back in following. So you have JHCD-E, which is the draft of the Administration of Medical Cannabis to Qualifying Students, and then the subsequent policy form associated with that, JHCD-E-1. Are there any comments or questions on that?
I'll speak to that real quickly. This is the draft model from the Associated School Boards. They anticipate that full usage of this newly enacted law will probably start taking place in early November, after all the rules have been, have been vetted and all the cardholders as part of the registry identification have been completed. But in essence, the three things that we need to know about this Administration of Medical Cannabis is basically that students will be permitted to have medical cannabis, staff would be able to have medical cannabis on campus for their, for their health needs. But they have to be valid registry holders, identification card holders, which comes from the South, South Dakota, or, South Dakota Department of Health. And underneath those regulations, there, you know, a student, let's say it's a student example, there that the student would be approved through the registry. Then the person that is administering the, the medical cannabis would be given a caregiver's card and have to be approved, and make sure that they're a qualifier. And that is all done through the South Dakota Department of Health, not through the school system. The only thing the school, the system would be required to do is verify that through identification that the card and the caregiver are the same person. And then finally, that it's a written and dated signed certification from a physician that this is a qualifying student for this medical cannabis program. The things that this particular, I guess, policy enforces is, in spite of those three things, would be that schools will not store and school personnel will not administer medical cannabis. There are waivers that school districts could choose to do that, although I don't know any that will, because it's still a federal crime underneath federal law to be in possession of marijuana, although it's unlikely that a school district would ever fall into that, that situation, since it's legal in the state of South Dakota. So all of the verbiage that you see there before you talks about it being permissible to legal cardholders, and caregivers need to come on campus to administer it and then take the product with them. All medical cannabis has to be in a non-smoking or vaped form. So it could be in the form of a lotion, or some sort of edibles, or something that they could take internally. So this is the first reading of the approved package from the Associated School Board, so South Dakota.
Okay. Any questions or other comments on that? And again, this is first reading, so.
I was able to attend a session on this policy and the, the guidelines for it at the recent conference in Sioux Falls. And you did explain, but I will just share for the public that the guidance does allow a school district to store and administer. This policy that is recommended by the Associated School Board.
Correct.
Group does not include that, so we're, we would be making the choice to not allow that, but guidance does allow it, if we wanted to update the policy at some point.
One of the other things that came up in that session, and is sort of covered here, but not as clearly as we perhaps want to, so when it talks about the, the, what is it called, nonsmokable products, and it lists what's there, one of the things they mentioned is that I think anyone who is licensed to sell medicinal marijuana, like that they're going to be limited to selling edible forms, which are clearly marked and labeled, but it is certainly possible that students will, who have authorization, will have access to edible products from other states. We might want to just very, very clear in our language that if they're going to be consuming an edible, it has to be clearly, clearly labeled or identifiable as a medicinal marijuana product, so that it's not just a gummy bear, or a child, you know, something that can provide more risk. So maybe just making that clear, like just clear right from the get-go, that like, it needs to be labeled in a way that it, it couldn't be mistaken for something else.
Thank you. Next item is, or next, JHF, which is Student Health, so it's Policy on Concussions. There's a change at the bottom, and I did have one comment here. Do we intend to change medical doctor everywhere it appears in that?
Actually, the policy committee did, in, in your packet, actually just to your right there, Doug, that is the new verbiage. And it, that's exactly what was cleared up, is we had some medical doctor versus healthcare professionals in there. So if you wouldn't mind reading the yellow.
Yes.
That was the accepted, accepted policy.
Right.
Moving forward.
Okay. So it would be worded this way. Students in state or local sanctioned activities who exhibit behavior or signs indicative of a concussion shall be immediately removed from the physical activity and encouraged to be examined by a medical doctor as soon as possible. A student who exhibits behavior or signs indicative of a concussion may only resume physical activity after receiving written clearance to return to play from a licensed healthcare provider trained in the evaluation and management of concussions, and submitting a return to activity permission, permission form signed by the student's parent guardian. Thank you. And then finally, item JOG, which I really hoped was going to be like student fitness, but it's not. It is the rewording of the Homeless Student Enrollment Services, that's the shortened version, so we would sensibly change the wording, experiencing homelessness to homeless as an adjective modifying child. And then reference to the KLA section.
Yes. And, and really, the, the question that came up through policy discussion was, if there's a reference to federal complaint policy, and we don't have a formal letterhead for federal complaint policy, our policy really is, any formal complaint is in written form. So KLA, which will be coming up in our next policy adoption in the coming months, will clarify that, that really any policy that's considered a formal complaint should be written in written form. That's, that's really the only thing that we're clarifying with that policy.
And what was the rationale for the changing to homeless children from children experiencing homelessness?
That was a title change. Jim, do you remember what the, what our rationale was for that? Basically, I don't know if it was just to shorten that, and we've got a new title really accompanying with the federal guidelines. I'll let Jim read it for a second and see where that may have came from.
I'm not opposed to the change. It just, one just seems to, to indicate that like, it's a characteristic of you as a child, as opposed to something that you're experiencing, you know? And so that's just like, you know, I was just wondering about the rationale for it.
I can't remember if I recommended that change or not. I, I know that I read this, and I know that there's federal law that governs homelessness. And our special education director is the homeless, in, in charge of homeless decisions and things like that. And I think this is just something to show that we are in compliance with federal law. This, you know, you know, five bullet point type of very broad language satisfies what's contained in federal law, which is much more specific. I can't remember on the, on the title, or on the experiencing homelessness language change, if that's something that I did, or if the committee did. I, it was probably back in, I don't know, when, how many months ago.
Yeah, it was, it was the spring, so.
So, and that, this is first reading, so if there's any concerns, we can come back next month. Okay, moving on. Item F, approval of resignations. We have Misha Graham as accounts payable, and Riley Johnson as the ninth grade football. Item G, approval of certified, classified, and coaching employment. Those are listed on pages 35 to 47. Jennifer Badke as the high school secretary, Trina Meredith, head debate coach, Alyssa Rolling, assistant dance, Sonny Oakey, Jill McBride, Pamela Smith as special education aides, Miranda Winteringer as assistant girls soccer, Dan Grasser, ninth grade football, Chris Nemec, special education aide, Candace Hanson, special ed teacher, Morgan Fuller as assistant oral and terp, Ophelia May as the accounts payable clerk, and Bridget Farmer as part-time custodian. Page, item H is the approval of non-staff extra duty employment. Flip over there, I just read some of these names, but I'll quickly go through them again. So this would include, for football, Dan Grasser, ninth grade, Tyler Williamson, eighth grade, volleyball, Haley Doty, ninth grade, golf, Kirk Hogan as both head boys and girls coach, boys soccer, Kurt Nelson, head coach, Dustin Sockness, assistant coach, girls soccer, Miranda Winteringer, assistant girls coach, gymnastics, Mark Upward, assistant coach, girls basketball, Doug Hanson, ninth grade, Tyler Williamson, seventh grade, dance team, Shawna Serny, head coach, Alyssa Rolling, assistant, marching band, Flags, Bailey Knipling as head advisor, wrestling coach, Brett Culver for middle school wrestling, cheer team, Linda Alvey as head cheer advisor, oral and terp, Morgan Fuller. The next item is the employment of the BSA employed members. That is Abby Allen, Josie Barth, Kyler Hagan, Cameron Carley, Jaren Merritt, Mettiger, Tatiana Towery, and Gracie Wood, with two subs, Kelly and Kenzie Mulherin. Continuing on, we have the approval of adult volunteers, Julie Barnett for tennis, and Caleb Molen, Molen for boys soccer. Item K, open enrollment applications. This is 22-2OE through 22-4OE. If you have any comments or questions, please do not mention those enrollments by name. Any comments, concerns, or questions?
Just clarification, obviously those are coming in to the district.
Yes. Item L, the approval of the finalized negotiations. So this is everything we worked on, this is now the signed, it's been signed by the administrators for VEA and both the, excuse me, the negotiators for VEA, and the head negotiator, and myself for the school district. And then we have the approval of school handbooks. Now, we can have a quick overview of these, but we will, to give time for review, take the vote on this at the next non-regular meeting, which will occur within a week. So, questions? If I give you two minutes, can you give it? Final rebuttal, let's go.
As the only administrator still in the room, I'll give you just a, a quick overview of the, the changes to the high school handbook, and I'll try to be brief here. The handbook, when I came here a couple of years ago, I, I noted a few things that I just felt were some essential items that were missing. Some of it very standard stuff, and some of it a little bit more important. So one of the first things I did in, in terms of restructuring some elements of the handbook was to go through and identify where a segment of the handbook corresponds with board policy. I wanted to make sure that it was stated right there in the handbook which board policy. So if the handbook is addressing harassment, it's going to identify the board policies. So if the handbook is addressing harassment, it's going to identify the board policies that correspond with any policies regarding harassment. If it has to do with the school resource officer, then any board policies that have to do with the school resource officer are recorded there. So it, it's a reference, but it's also a valuable reference for myself or for Mr. Huska as an administrator, because when we're dealing with a potential student conduct violation, it gives us not just the student handbook as a guideline, but a direct reference to the board policies that are already in place to operate within too, so that we can consult those simultaneously with the student handbook. So that was, that was the first step that, that we took. I wanted to make sure there was a disclaimer statement at the beginning of the handbook that basically makes clear what I think is already implied, which is the fact that the handbook doesn't form a contract in, in so much as outlines that there is a framework in place in terms of what you can expect for certain situations. If a student is truant from school, the handbook will lay forth what you can expect as the consequences for that truancy. But there are other policies or other things that might have gray area. For instance, maybe a student is caught vandalizing school property. And there, as a result of that and, and the investigation, there are things that, that come to light that you don't want to be locked into a certain response always. And so what the handbook, what the disclaimer statement basically says is if it's not specifically laid forth in the handbook, we, we would utilize administrative discretion and things like consultation with the school attorney and, and other administration to, to formulate that answer, to, to make that determination. I have also taken the step of removing from the handbook a, a chart that had been there for a number of years, a, a matrix, if you will, that would spell out if you did this, this is what happens on the first offense, this is what happens on the second, this is what happens on the third. Again, doing, by, by having that chart, you, number one, you provide the parent of the student who's in trouble. Basically, you provide for them this, this black and white document that seems to state exactly what's going to happen. And you, you do not allow for any level of discretion, and to me that's dangerous. So we, and again, it's not because we want to be wishy-washy with these things, but it is because you cannot have one size fits all policy. And so you need to allow the administrator to, to make the determination based upon frequency and severity of the action. How, how many times has a student been involved in a fight with classmates? And it, you know, does it happen in, you know, every week, every month? Does it happen once every five years? These are all factors that, that have to weigh in. And so I, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about having a matrix in place there. Now, we'll operate off a matrix. Mr. Huska and myself will operate off one to ensure that there's continuity between the two of us so that we would not handle situation, one, one administration, one administrator handle a situation differently than the other. But that, that becomes an internal document that he and I would utilize, that, that doesn't necessarily have to be in the handbook. The handbook still identifies what the range of consequences could be for certain actions, but it does so just within a paragraph saying, you know, this could be anything from a warning from your administrator on a first offense on up to in-school suspension or detention or whatever. So I think it's, it's a cleaner, neater arrangement in that regard. Obviously, as I alluded to earlier, it contains the new R A P, wording for the new R A P incentive that, that we wanted to include as well. But other than that, there are some definitions that didn't exist previously in the handbook, such as reckless endangerment, there's a section on that, which that can happen whether a student is behind the wheel of their vehicle in the parking lot or running in the hallway or things like that, just general student behaviors that get out of hand from time to time. A definition of what insubordination looks like. But various things, we didn't, here's, here's another example. I laughed with Mr. Alvy about this this spring. We didn't have anything anywhere in student handbook or in, in board policy on public displays of affection, which is something we run into, believe it or not, in the high school environment. And I like to be able to point to policy and say, nah, it's right there, you really shouldn't be doing that. So now the handbook includes it.
Okay, and we will be approving this, this will be the first time we've approved handbooks. Item N, approval of essential staff. So if I understand this correctly, go ahead.
Yeah, this is basically an extension just from like we did last year under unusual circumstances with the pandemic. Last year, you declared all of our staff to be essential workers in the sense that if we needed to have them remain at work during a pandemic, as long as they're asymptomatic, they are available to continue working. And of course, we'd like to continue that this year.
Okay, and then we have the South Dakota High School Activities Association, election ballot and resolution. Do we have any recommendations?
Yes, we, we had already voted before for Todd Palmer and these are just, they continue to be runoffs. So we'll just continue to stick with the same person in hopes that they can win the election. But Todd's a West River athletic director and does a great job, Sturgis Brown, so.
Okay, so the final vote will be include Todd Palmer for that one. And then item P, approval of use of facilities by Bato on May twenty-first and twenty-second of twenty-twenty-two. Get the thinking ahead award. Do you want to comment on this, Rachel?
Just looking ahead to May, all of our parents like to have those dates, so we would love to use our great facilities again for that weekend.
And are you aware of any conflicts?
I don't know if, if Mr. Huska has confirmed that, but I will make sure it is.
He did approve it, so we go with him first to ask, make sure the space is available.
Okay, very good. And then item Q, approval of à la carte price changes. So you can see those quarter increase for extra entrees, et cetera.
Just a reminder that Kevin was able to confirm that lunch program will be free for the K through twelve. Again, this year, breakfast and lunch program. These, of course, are à la carts, these are the entrees if somebody wanted a second hot dog, a second slice of pizza, of course, those are charged. And our, our proposal is coming directly from L S I or lunch provider that they would like to have the increase of those dollar, or those twenty-five cent increases there for, for this coming school year. We would normally have done this, potentially in May when we had discussions, but they've come across some late increases in some of their, their abilities for the food service program. So they asked, this, this came a little later than normal.
Mr. Alvy, normally when we do have payment for our lunches, the free and reduced individuals, if they need à la carte, it's at the same rate, even if their lunches are free normally.
Yeah, great question, yes. All, yeah, the, there's no reduced price for the seconds options or if one of our high school kid wants the coffee bar or some of the new things that have been added, those are full price for seconds.
And I know, I think at the full meal, meal previously was almost three dollars, like two dollars seventy-five, something around that, right?
Yeah, somewhere in that range, yes.
Just giving some range to what the entree around two dollars and extra Domino's pizza.
They like that Domino's pizza.
They do like that pizza.
We talked, we talked about this sort of, I mean, we didn't formally meet as a food committee, but Damon reached out to both of us so that we could discuss it. And one of the things that we talked about was that for our vendor, I mean, food prices have increased across the board, you know, in the last couple of years and we've been seeing that. But even more so, labor prices are increasing with the sort of current, you know, labor shortage and other types of things. And so we didn't see the ask here as being unreasonable, given the situation that they're facing.
Thank you, good point.
And these meals do not have to be affected by the calculator?
Correct.
That were given.
Okay. Okay, that concludes new business.
Can I ask a question about item M really quick?
Of course.
The essential staff. I'm just wondering with the, with the testing that we have now, that we have so much more testing capacity and availability, is it possible when allowing those essential staff to come back when they're asymptomatic to, to also have them test as just a precaution since we now have that capability that we didn't have last year? Could we add that to that policy?
That'd be great. I, I, I think Amy had given a lot of those last year because people wanted to know themselves. So I think the staff are already on board for voluntarily doing that. But really, it's a discussion item for the board.
Yeah, that would be part of our return to school committee, designated them as essential employees. Doesn't necessarily say we can mandate testing or anything, it just says they're essential workers.
Okay.
So I think that would be more like in our return to school policy?
Yep.
That if we want to do, you know.
This designation doesn't change sort of that.
It just tells them like manufacturing and healthcare workers and school teachers are considered essential.
Got it, thank you.
When it came to requiring that to work.
Excellent. Okay, because we are tabling, or in effect delaying the vote on item M, the motion would be to approve items A through L and N through Q. M, did I?
M is, and on my copy, M is the handbooks and N is the essential staff, is that what it says on yours, Shane?
No.
Okay.
But I just picked the one up at the front of the thing.
So you're missing a, some item is missing.
I have approval of student handbooks as N, I must have an additional item somewhere, but I'm not sure what that is. But we know which one we're talking about, so.
Yes, yes.
Make a motion to approve items A through L and N as in Nancy through Q.
Motion by Rachel.
Seconded.
Oh, I didn't, Shane, thank you. On here, it tells me you're Lindsay. Motion has been moved by Rachel, seconded by Shane. All in favor of approving items A through L and N through Q or all items excluding the student handbooks? Please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Okay, on to reports, we still have our five minute timer, so.
Yep. There we go. Uh, just wanted to thank Sanford Vermillion for providing our staff in-service breakfast. We'll have our guests from St. Agnes over. Staff, of course, will come on sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth. And we're getting excited for the start of school there. We wanted to thank all the people that had discussion this evening or had their hands and, and their, their words involved with the return to school plan, there's still some minor tweaks there, but thank you for all those people that were part of that. The administrators included, sent out, I think, and maybe you've gotten them all, and if not, we'll make sure you do have them. Sam's was the last one today that I think was in your, in your, on the desk here. But really, we had a very successful summer school experience. Some of the numbers that we had asked to attend or to come to our summer school experiences at the high school or at any of our levels, not all the students completed the entire summer experience, but largely it was very successful and you can see the principal's reports there about the numbers of kids and the, and the gaining of credit and things there. New staff orientations planned for this week, August twelfth. So we'll have staff P D for our new staff on that day and just kind of giving them the overview of the district. And then all of our staff returning sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. School begins on the nineteenth for students, like I said, we're super excited about that. I had the opportunity to present at the Associated School Board's S A S D joint convention last week. That was a, a great opportunity. I was given the opportunity to talk about South Dakota superintendent's perceptions of threat assessment. And during that process, we've, we've gained a great ally with the South Dakota Department of Public Safety and Homeland Security and working on some grant opportunities as well as just safety analysis of our schools. Shane and of course Carol were both involved up there in going to different sessions, just a, a really well attended and like just a good opportunity to, to learn about school activities. So it was nice to have that opportunity, most of our administrative team also participated, so that's all I have.
Okay. Moving on, business manager, Kevin.
I think the biggest highlights I have for this month deal with food service. Included in your packet this month, we had a summer food service participation report. We had about, it looks like an average of eight hundred and nineteen meals served per week. And this is down significantly from last year, but my understanding is that the way the program was run last year with delivering meals, that it looks to me like that one is always going to be an outlier there. Because I went back the previous several years and it looks like we were, we traditionally averaged in that eight hundred range. So we are pretty much on par with that and, and not really concerned there how far it's been dropped off from last year. As Mr. Alvy indicated here, we do have now approval for free meals for the entire school year. Want to remind everyone that that is with a fully reimbursable meal that, that includes fruit and veggie in order for that meal to be free, otherwise it is at the à la carte rates. And we will have the online payment option open this year for funding lunch accounts for those à la carte items. And then we continue to take payments for any of those à la carte items at the district office.
Can I ask a quick sort of maybe stupid question? But do we know what's going on on Thursday? Because it seems like we have this one to two hundred and then every Thursday it's like nine hundred, eight hundred. Like is there a special group that comes over on Thursday?
You know, I noticed that as well, and I don't know for sure. That was my only thought too, was between, that was, that was my question is if it was a menu driven or if it's a specific group that comes.
Well, nine hundred, they have the weekend deals. So previously, we had Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Thursday they got those and Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
So three times.
And back to Monday, so they did the whole weekend off. I have a little memory from last year.
Yes, that is.
But it was a, the pre-made meals. But pizza is a big day too, instead of us, we think.
Okay, board reports, while the return to school committee met this morning. I won't give you any of the details of that meeting. At this point, I will encourage, and maybe Mr. Alvy, the office staff can help facilitate getting other committee meetings scheduled, at least the first meeting, and then subsequent meetings can go from there.
Yep.
So we can get that taken care of, so that hopefully, certainly a number of committees, not all, but finance and some of those that have not met yet this year should convene sometime before our next meeting. Are there any other board committees? I don't know whether Booster Club or Public School Foundation has met in the past month. Nope, okay.
I would like to see what's upcoming though, the Boys and Girls Club, we have a full board slated. Our first meeting will be next Tuesday over the noon hour, so we're looking for, on the Boys and Girls Club out of the Brookings, Northern Plains will be coming down and helping us have our first board meeting, looking forward to that.
Excellent.
Booster Club, they do have the Booster Bash, which is Friday, eight twenty coming up. They also have their sale on Tanager cards next week.
Very good, thank you. Okay, any others? I don't believe so. Financial report.
Really don't have a lot to highlight here this month as far as the financial report that went out in the packet, just to inform you that we continue to take a look at the ESER dollars that we have available to us and sort of game plan, not only based on the eligible expenses for those dollars, but also where it might be most advantageous for our school district in terms of, of which funds or, or where to go with, with that funding as far as recommendation, specifically with our ESER three dollars.
Okay. Any questions? No, okay. Onto our claims, reported on pages seventy-eight through eighty-two. Any questions on those? You have a perfect string of motions, you might as well.
Motion to accept the financial report?
Thank you, Shane.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Shane and Jim to approve the financials and claims and financial, yeah. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Abstentions, motion passes. Okay, future agenda items. Do we need to have an agenda? We, we do need to set a meeting for next week and do we need an agenda item about adding some additional health support? Or is that taken care of?
Uh, that is, really came from last week's meeting. If you're, if you're good with that, we're running with it already.
Okay, good, I just want to make sure that you had everything you needed from us for approvals.
The two things that would be on, on a short Zoom, if you wanted to do a Zoom meeting for next week would be, of course, the return to school plan as well as the ESER dollars. We'd, we'd have the plan for the grant to just, or. We'd, we'd have the plan for the grant to just, or to complement the things that the state are asking us to have by August twentieth in place, so.
And Monday night, we have our school celebration.
Yes, five to, yeah, five to seven is the staff picnic and obviously all the school board is encouraged to come to Barstow Park and have burgers and things with your families with the staff.
So when would we like to meet?
I don't have my calendar because I don't have it.
You don't have your calendar.
Security incident.
Someone hacked your calendar, Rachel?
No.
Okay.
This is a Zoom meeting, you said?
I, I guess it could be. I didn't, if you wanted to be in person, we could certainly arrange that, just not sure if we can do that here because of the times and the days and things, but.
Okay, well, if we don't have calendars, we're gonna have to coordinate this. I'm thinking Monday or two, probably ideally Monday with the start of school.
It might need to be in the evening, Mr. Alvey, with all your school committees.
In-service, yeah.
So I was thinking just maybe Monday at, or normal seven?
City council meeting.
Yeah.
Forty-ten DVD.
Yeah, we could determine. Barstow for the picnic? Can we use the middle school?
Oh, good idea.
Yep.
And then you can tour the middle school.
There you go. Yeah.
Do that.
Okay.
Seven.
Yep, and then we don't have to clean up the picnic. Seven at the middle school or do you want to get seven-thirty just for buffer?
Might be a good idea, seven-thirty.
Let's say seven-thirty at the Vermillion Middle School and we will have Zoom capability if you're traveling.
Are there any open houses at night?
No, no, sorry, no, they're doing day things, yep.
Okay. Our next regular full board meeting will be September thirteenth, right here in City There's no need for executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
By Carol.
Second.
Second by Jim. All in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. We are adjourned. I have nine fifty-one.